Listened on the consent agenda or considered under one motion and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. First, do any commissioners have an item they'd like to pull off the agent consent agenda?
Vice Mayor, Vice, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, B D, B eight D.
Anything like any others? And Vice Mayor Shipley, I'm looking that up, which B eight D that's related to?
Vice Mayor Shipley, it's. Sorry, it's a text amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Now, if any member of the public would like to pull an item off the agenda. If you're present, you can go to the podium and Sherry will call upon you. And if you are present online, you raise your hand using the raise your hand feature and Sherry will call upon.
Dennis Jacobson.
Thank you. I would like to have removed from the consent agenda item B five A, the Olson contract. Thank you.
At that, that's all the items, Mayor.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. I now look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Minus the two items that are pulled.
This is Commissioner Ananda. I move to accrue the consent agenda, accepting items B five A and B eight B.
Vice Mayor Shipley, second.
Mayor Finkel, there's a motion by Commissioner Ananda, a second by Vice Mayor Shipley. Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, aye, passes four to zero. First item pulled is item B five A. Mr. Jacobson, you pulled that item? If you want to make any, you have three minutes to make your comments.
Thank you for considering this. In nineteen seventy-five, when I was a sixteen-year-old learning how to drive, I could drive from downtown Omaha to the western side of Omaha and not hit a traffic light. So I know the technology is there to do that. It would be awesome if we could employ even newer technologies than in nineteen seventy-five here in Lawrence. Recent changes with Olson have been only marginally better. Lawrence was actually used in a spring semester class on traffic engineering at KU as an example of how not to do traffic engineering design. I'm familiar with the current engineer. He's a wonderful individual. He simply lacks the training and experience to execute on this part of his overwhelming job. It's not his fault. We all know doctors and attorneys specialize in in areas of their specialty. So it's it's unreasonable to expect this individual to do something similar. Thus, what I've been proposing is the city commission consider before any additional expenditures to Olson, that expertise from the KU School of Engineering and Traffic be consulted and pulled into this to help the city better prepare for the future. I would argue that Phase Two should not be complete, should not be started until Phase One execution on Sixth Street and Twenty-third Streets are better because you still can't drive from the western edge of town, you know, across town on Twenty-third Street or to downtown on Sixth Street going eastbound without hitting a red light. I would challenge any commissioner if they've been able to do that since they've spent, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the previous one. In closing, future, I would encourage the city council to have future traffic engineering plans and include a vision for what Lawrence is likely to look like in, you know, five or ten years or fifteen years. And to partner with local expertise, which I'm sure is eager. In fact, I know they're eager to partner with the city of Lawrence. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Think, Nick, I believe this is your item. Could you give provide us some background on this item?
Yes, Nick Hoyt, Engineering Program Manager. So this, as Mr. Jacobson did allude to, this is the second phase of a traffic signal coordination program that we started a couple of years ago. I kind of have a short presentation I'd like to run through that kind of showed what we did and where we're going and some of the results. I think Mr. Jacobson's right that there is a lot, there's a lot more that can be done and there's a long road and continuing improvement that we're gonna keep working at. I like his idea of partnering with KU Traffic Engineering or, you know, some of their classes. And I think there's some opportunities there that we will investigate. But with that, I'm gonna briefly run through this presentation. Is that screen sharing correctly and we're all good here?
Yes.
Um, so we're gonna start and talk about twenty nineteen where there's a citywide survey of different services that kind of led to this first project, what we did, what we accomplished and where we're going from here. So in twenty nineteen, the city of Lawrence had a survey of its citizens. I know you can't read this, but there's, this is the first major question of major categories of service. What are we dissatisfied with? What are we satisfied with? At the top is fire medical, solid waste, towards the bottom there when there's a lot of pink, not so satisfied. I'm gonna highlight this one overflow or overall flow of motor vehicle traffic and congestion management on the streets of Lawrence. So that question had sixty people, sixty percent of respondents were either dissatisfied or neutral, which was the highest ranking in the city or of those services. Next, another question I'm gonna emphasize from that survey was specific to transportation issues. So this ranges from traffic signals, transit, pedestrian bike issues. These top two here, so this question asks, what two things should the city most focus on in the next two years? So the top two, traffic signal coordination on major streets, ease of east-west travel in Lawrence was number two. So that survey spoke very loudly that we can do better with the traffic signals and we need to. And as Mr. Jacobson alluded to, some people are very passionate about it and rightfully so. Um, so at that time, we modified the twenty-nine CIP and selected Olson to start working on the traffic signals. Then we started a twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one traffic signal maintenance program in the maintenance program part of the CIP. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeremy with Olson, who's gonna quickly talk about what we did and some of the results we found.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. Jeremy Strz with Olson, the project manager over there with Olson with this contract. I can kind of provide a brief overview about what signal coordination is. In general, signal coordination is just that. It's multiple signalized intersections working together to get you through a roadway. So typically, the goal is into enhance operations of one or both directions of travel along a roadway, thereby reducing the number of stops on that roadway. The downside of coordination is an increase in wait times at the side street to enter or cross that mainline corridor. This is opposed to free operations where each signal operates independently. It's free or uncoordinated. In this mode, each individual intersection is operating independent based on vehicle demand. Basically, by selecting time periods where we run signals and coordination versus uncoordinated, it's critical to the, for the efficiency of a system. So selecting those times based on typical travel patterns along a corridor and then depending on those volume characteristics, mix of coordinated timing plans and free operations is used to balance that vehicle delay along the corridor and on that side street, on those side streets. As Nick noted previously, the primary goal of this project aligns with the goal of the community was to improve traffic flow along those priority corridors, specifically the east-west corridors of Sixth Street as well as Twenty-third and Clinton Parkway. And then also the north-south corridor of Iowa Street. In total, forty-seven intersections were reviewed as part of this contract. One thing to note is that we base the timings off of existing equipment, but we also did work with the city to make recommendations for system improvements, including left turn phasing, flashing yellow arrow signal head implementation, communications equipment, detection upgrades and monitoring equipment. So we could manage the system more efficiently. In order to assess those existing conditions and make recommendations to those proposed changes, we collected data on the system users and signal equipment such as controllers, detection devices, signal arrangements, phasing and operations, as well as the existing communications method and intersection geometrics. Another item that we looked at was with these new timings, we provided updates to vehicle and pedestrian clearance times. This to be consistent with current practices and recommendations from I T E and federal highways associations. This provides adequate time for vehicles and pedestrians to carry through the intersection safely and efficiently in addition to those updated signal timings. New signal timings were implemented and fine-tuned between summer of twenty twenty and winter of twenty twenty-one or winter of twenty twenty with the final performance measures being documented, spring twenty twenty-one. When we talk about those performance measures, one way to look at performance along a corridor is to look at vehicle travel times and delay. Travel times is relatively straightforward. It's the amount of time it takes to get from one end of the corridor to another. The delay component refers to the amount of vehicle, of time a vehicle spent stopped along the corridor at the signalized intersections. Seen in this chart, the green represents a free flow speed from along Iowa Street from north to south, meaning you would have no stops along that travel and you're traveling the speed limit. The red line on this chart shows the before vehicle delay and the blue line represents the after delay based on an average of five runs through the corridor. Along Iowa Street specifically, delay was reduced fifteen percent across all time periods. If we look at the larger overall network reports from the three corridors, including Sixth Street and Twenty-third Clinton Parkway, vehicle delay was shown to be reduced by twenty-seven percent across all time periods along these corridors. Carrying that through, fuel consumption is another output which we reviewed. Fuel consumption was reduced by thirteen percent along the three corridors and vehicle emissions were reduced by twelve percent across all corridors for all time periods. Based on those performance metrics and using data published by the U S D O T, we calculated an average annual savings for all road users traveling within those main three corridors. And these estimates show savings of approximately eight and a quarter million annually, overall highlighting the cost effectiveness of a signal re-timing effort taken on by the city. And I'll turn it back over to Nick to maybe talk a little bit about what is next with this proposed next great proof.
Um, you know, so as Dennis said, that there's always room for improvement and we're gonna keep working at it. I think one thing I'd like to highlight is as part of the changes we made, we increased time for pedestrians and we increased time where the, all the signal is red and yellow. So to improve safety and with that, we were also able to improve travel times across town. You know, one thing I've learned for sure is all this traffic signal stuff, it's a balancing act and we're balancing cross-traffic and each direction of traffic. And if traffic flow is much higher in one direction, like everyone's going downtown in the morning, yes, you could time every signal to hit that, but when you're balancing things, it's a little harder. So where we're going from here, we're gonna continue expanding our communications with, with the signals to the traffic control center. And that's expanding the fiber network and we're gonna try some point-to-point wireless communication and then continue our equipment upgrades at each signal. Keep working on improving our vehicle pedestrian clearance because we only did that for about half the signals. This phase one, we're gonna do that for the rest. And then we're implementing a performance management system, which basically what that is, is once we get each signal connected to fiber, it's gonna collect every data point of every call, every left turn signal, so we can see where things go wrong. Sometimes I feel like the traffic signals, it's like cleaning my house with my kids and I wash the dishes. Then I turn around, the, the, the living room's a disaster. And with traffic signals, things can go wrong, but it's invisible. So that performance system, performance management system is a key component of, of daily knowing the health of our system and collecting that data and being able to prioritize our efforts where things are going wrong. We're also gonna do some other timing work. We're working with the local local parties, emergency management, police on some incident planning, work zone management and some special event management for South Iowa K basketball games. All of that is very dependent on having fiber connected to the signals and the more fiber, the better. Here in green are the corridors we already, we coordinated in phase one. We're gonna branch off that on with the blue corridor shown there and as phase two. And then there's several other projects that we're working on, some part of this shown in purple, where we're gonna look at the North Lawrence Flood Warning System for the underpass. We're gonna see if we can improve flow at Clinton Parkway and Waukerusa because it's real hard to get off the highway there during rush hour. And then we're working with KDOT for a fairly large fiber extension project to South Iowa, where KDOT's gonna partner with us hopefully around four hundred thousand dollars. Because right now, all those traffic signals on the south part of town are not connected to our traffic control center and very hard to operate. And that's what's kind of coming in phase two. And with that, oh, I forgot to mention, and then next year, we're gonna start design on replacing the downtown traffic signals at Sixon Mass and at the bridge there at Sixon Vermont. None of those signals have detection or head buttons and very old equipment that causes a headache there. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and one.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Nick, any commissioners have questions?
Um, this is Commissioner Ananda. I was curious, I think I recall that the, the traffic data that was gathered was gathered during the pandemic. Is that correct?
Um, the traffic, or this is Nick Hoyt, Engineering Program Manager. The traffic counts used for the, the timing of the signals was completed in December of twenty nineteen. The pre and post-travel runs that Jeremy was showing was done during the pandemic. So like on Sixth Street was done in May of twenty, so there's very light traffic. So most of that was modeled data, like Iowa Street was done in the fall and they drove the corridor before and after and took the time difference there on like that graph that Jeremy showed of that reduction.
Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, other questions at this point? See none. Says a public hearing item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item. If you're present, will Sherry will call upon you. And then if you're online, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature and Sherry will call upon you.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Qualer. Before I start on that, Mayor, I just wanna be clear to those individuals. If you've already spoken on this item, each individual gets to speak on items one time. Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I was just wondering, are we looking at these, the coordination times like all the time or just during the day? Because I am dissatisfied with how they are like after nine because like basically if you're like, if a car's coming up Crestline, going to Clinton Parkway or like Lawrence Avenue up to Clinton Parkway, it seems like the stoplights just stop automatically. Like they turn green for the cars, like even if they're turning, turning right. So they're basically, there's been, I'm oftentimes getting stopped at a red light just so a car can turn right. That's going the other way, like where it, it didn't need a stoplight to turn right because there's no traffic coming the other way. All, all it did was basically cause me to stop. And I think if we're gonna be coordinating things better, I think we need to, like at nighttime, instead of just automatically turning lights red for cars coming off these side streets, I, I think that it should wait like ten seconds to see if they actually need a, a red light in order just to make a right turn. So I just wanted to throw that out there because it just seems like this coordination stuff, it's all for the people driving during the day. And then at night, like they just don't give, give a crap. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? That's all the comments, Mayor.
Mayor Finkel, I bring it back to the commission. Either Nick or Jeremy on Chris's comment there, is that what you were talking about with the free flow at night? That it, it reacts to who, who comes to a particular intersection?
Yeah. Uh, so. I'm on Zoom all day. You'd think I'd be better at. There we go. So what Chris is talking about, like right now, we go out of coordination at eight thirty and you can see that traffic flow is dropping. And I actually had a conversation with Jeremy today about, you know, are people up later in the summer and should we stay in coordination later? That is, you know, a question that we're looking at, when you should go out of coordination. It's like I said before, it's a balancing act, Chris. So it's like, if we go in coordination and it's nine thirty at night, then someone's gonna have to wait ninety seconds to get on the side street where potentially there's very light traffic. So it's an ongoing balancing act and I would agree that this area on the graph from eight thirty to nine thirty is kind of the question mark of should that be in coordination or not? For these higher traffic flows, you definitely want to be in coordination. So Chris, you, you noticed that on, right on the spot. One thing I would say is two years ago, all the signals were in free all day. So that choppy, that choppy stop-start that you're describing was all day before we implemented this new plan.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Okay, commissioners, comments, questions?
Vice Mayor Shipley, I mean, I, I think I wanna thank staff for reminding us of bicycles and pedestrians. We spend actually a lot of time talking about how we can make access for bicyclists and pedestrians better in Lawrence. And I have often had a hard time thinking that the goal was for cars to drive fast. That's not my understanding of the goal of, of either coordination or any traffic lights, but safety and access. So I, I would not myself hold whether I could drive through town and hit all our green lights as an indicator that we had accomplished what we set out to accomplish here in Lawrence. That might be what other communities are interested in. I think we are interested in making sure that everyone has safe access and that will mean to a certain extent, deprioritizing or rearranging our priorities around cars being the single most important person in, in any space. So I just kind of wanted to say I appreciate staff making that comment, reminding us of that.
This is Commissioner Ananda. I appreciate the Vice Mayor's comments, but as someone with three children in three different schools and about twenty minutes to get there, going up Sixth Street quickly is a priority sometimes, right? Additionally, you know, I live in North Lawrence and I travel sixth regularly in Iowa to leave town on fifty-nine and it takes at least twenty minutes. That's a good morning at seven thirty. So I think that there is still work to be done and I'm glad that, you know, some of those areas that you've highlighted for phase two, including at the bridge, as well as the, the far south end or yeah, south end of Twenty-third, I'm sorry, Iowa. Those are, those are gonna be helpful and it is that balance, right? It's not just traffic. It is getting people through, but also making sure that everyone using those intersections is safe. But there does have to be that balance in acknowledging, you know, the needs of our community. As our community grows, we have a lot of places to be throughout the community. And sometimes having those green lights is how we get there safely as well.
Mayor Finkel, I would, I would add, you know, the balancing act I know is always the trick, both with pedestrians, bikes and even the flow of traffic. I often travel Ninth Street and turn either on Kentucky or Tennessee going, you know, somewhere. And Kentucky and Tennessee are pretty well timed that if you're traveling along that road at, you can hit green lights if you stay at the speed limit. But whenever I turn off Ninth Street, I know I'm gonna hit a red light because it's not time for the people turning off the, off Ninth Street. It's time for the people to have the green light going the other way. And I think to myself every time, gosh, if I could just control this, I would have a green light after I turn, but I don't. And so there definitely is a balancing act. But I do certainly appreciate the, you know, the improvements we have made. I would also note, as Nick did, that there's only so much we can do with our existing technology. And if we're gonna continue to make improvements, we have to continue to invest in new technology. And as, as Mr. Jacobson said, you know, there probably is better technology out there than we have and we know it. And we have to prioritize that along with many other things to decide where that falls in, in, in the midst of all our priorities. But, you know, I think we need to continue to invest. I'm glad we changed the CIP to start addressing this. I think investing, continuing to invest in technology is important. And certainly, I would love to get folks at KU involved in helping in any way they can. I know Nick is open to that. And I'd hope Mr. Jacobson and Nick continue to talk about that as we, as we push this forward and we always take all the help we can get.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I'd just like to add that I appreciate that we're attempting to ameliorate the, you know, what has caused our citizens concerns. I mean, the survey was very clear and I appreciate that we're trying to deal with the problems that our, our citizens and residents are experiencing.
Mayor Finkel, any other comments or motions on this item?
This is Commissioner Ananda. Make sure I got the right one pulled up here. I would move that we authorize the city manager to execute an engineering services agreement in the amount of one hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars with Olson Inc. for professional services for phase two of traffic signal coordination and timing study.
This is Commissioner Bulley, second.
Mayor Finkel, there's a motion by Commissioner Ananda, a second by Commissioner Bulley. Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, aye, passes four to zero. Thank you, everyone, including Mr. Jacobson. I look forward to the continued work on this and Jeremy from Olson. We thank you for your work and your continued work and look forward to continued improvements. We'll now move on to item eight D. Vice Mayor Shipley, I believe you pulled that item. Go ahead.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Shipley. Last month, I believe it was, there were a couple other text amendments that came our way that came from the public, not specifically from our prioritization. from our prioritization. Um, and I just wanted to see if this was something that, um, for consistency, we wanted to flag for that reason, or if it perhaps already fell into a priority category that we've kind of outlined. Um, and I don't know if Jeff or anyone's here that could answer that.
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services Director. Good evening, um, Vice Mayor Shipley. I think you're referencing the, the planning work plan, is that correct? Okay. Uh, in, in, in relation to the work plan there, this is a little bit, um, a little bit, but kind of at the, not the medium level of that work plan. That was typically a higher level look at the items going on. So this one's a little bit in that realm there, uh, kind of looking through the amendment and the process and play there. I think it does fold into a lot of the things that we've been talking about as part of code revisions and trying to, um, work towards, um, streamlining and simplifying things. And I think the process could, this could be the start of that process to help us streamline some of those things that we're seeing in the community.
Uh, Vice Mayor Shipley, so, to be clear with what you're saying, um, we could, uh, accept this, and you don't feel something we haven't prioritized is gonna line skip, so to say. It's something that, well, you've already been thinking about, and we've already prioritized.
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services Director. Correct. We've been thinking about this for, for a while, actually, uh, before COVID started. So it's something that's been on our radar for quite a while. So it would not cause a, a line skip in that.
Vice Mayor Shipley, thank you very much.
Mayor Finkel, any other questions? This is a public hearing item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, please let Sherry know if you're in person, or raise your hand, use the raise your hand feature, um, online, and Sherry will call upon you.
There's no public comment on this item.
Mayor Finkel, aye, thank you, Sherry. I bring it back to the commission. I, um, Vice Mayor Shipley, is that satisfy your concern? Are you willing to move ahead with this one?
Vice Mayor Shipley, I, that was the concern I had, and, and I know I might just like to hear from Commissioner Bowley, since he shared my concern last time, if he's also satisfied with this.
Commissioner Bowley, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, then I would, uh, maybe look for a motion.
Uh, Vice Mayor Shipley, since I'm the weirdo that pulled it, I will give it a go. Um, I would like to move that we consider initiating a text amendment, TA 211-00211, to Chapter 20 of the City of Lawrence Code to modify standards pertaining to non-conforming use expansions.
Ms. Commissioner Bowley's second.
Mayor Finkel, there's a motion by Vice Mayor Shipley, a second by Commissioner Bowley. Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Nanda?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, aye, passes four to zero. That brings us to public comment. The public is allowed to speak on items or issues that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Individuals should address all comments and questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to 13 minutes. If any person would like to make general public comment about something not on the agenda, please let Sherry know if you're in person, or if you're online, raise your hand, use the raise your hand function, and Sherry will call upon you.
Yeah, general, general public comment? Okay, go right ahead. It's not related to an agenda item. Okay, go right ahead. Just state your name, and I'll start the clock, which you can watch up here.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ian Matthews. My father was a city commissioner in Newton, Kansas, for 12 years. And he liked to say two things. Number one, it takes a committee to fix a pothole in our alley. And number two, the joke he liked to tell frequently was, it takes three things to be a commissioner. Number one, gray hair to look wise, glasses to look smart, and hemorrhoids for that concerned look. Gentlemen, ladies, I apologize for my presence this evening. I had intended to wear a white shirt and slacks and look like a presentable person. And what you see before you is what I was able to put together. What I would like to address tonight, there are homeless people in this city that do not have 24-hour access to water in the park next to the library. And a simple fix, it seems to me, there is a green post at the west end, west and south corner of that lawn that is a water source for the city to, uh, water the garden or the, you know, the lawn. It's my understanding that that water source can be turned on with something as simple as what's called a water key, which I'm also told is a very, uh, inexpensive thing. And I've seen such a water key, and I'm guessing it is a very inexpensive thing. So, what I would like to ask this evening is, could that water post be turned on to just a trickle? And specifically, there is a water fountain in the library, and I see there is one here in this building that will fill a water bottle. And I'm not sure how water is measured. I believe it's centimeters per moment, or, you know, per inch, or whatever. But if we could have that water turned on to just a trickle, just enough that you could fill a bottle in a reasonable amount of time, have that water turned on when the library closes at night, and turned off again in the morning when the library opens, that would facilitate the people that might sleep down there at night having water readily accessible. Instead of crossing streets or going where there might be a convenience store, they would have water 24/7, basically. If they were to use the fountain inside the library when it's open, and get water from that trickle during the evening. Now, what that would allow, or, uh, I'm not sure the word I'm looking for, if some of these folks who I know, I, I know them well, I've met several of them. I am homeless myself, and several of them are alcoholic, and they did not have a chance in life. One gentleman I met is 33 years old, and...
Um, your three minutes is up, I think.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll make it, I'll make it, I'll, I'll finish.
Finish, please.
If we could have that water turned on, people will not have to cross streets to get water in the middle of the night. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chris Flowers?
I, um, this is Chris Flowers, and there is a story in the journal world about how we had a low voter turnout. And just from running, I, I noticed that myself. And I think part of the, part of the problem is that it's held during the first Tuesday in August, and like, a lot of renters, they can't even move into their new place. Like, where I'm renting, it said, um, of, like, the apartments weren't available to move in till the 5th. So, that, part of the voter, low voter turnout, I think it's because of, it's the first two, the primary was the first Tuesday in August, and I, I know, I'm pretty sure there's nothing we can do about that. So, I've just been thinking, and I, I just wonder, like, when it comes to voter registration, are we putting out signs like we do for daylight saving time, saying, hey, you need to register by, by this Tuesday? That, that's just something I think we could do. But my big idea I've been thinking about is if cities, or if, if states can have vax, like, lotteries for vaccines where they give out money for getting a vaccine, is it possible for cities to give out, like, money for people who vote during the election? Just because I'm pretty sure if we gave out money, like, if there was 20,000, a $20,000 prize, and we're gonna raffle it off to anyone who voted, I think there'd be a hell of a lot bigger turnout. I've, I've talked to people who, like, like at work, who aren't big into politics, and they said they would vote if there was, like, the $20,000 prize. And we are considering expanding the commission by two seats. That would be at least $40,000 a year, you know, based on salaries, if, if they're, the new seats get the same salary. And it just seems that we're gonna do this to get more people politically involved. We could do it for cheaper, just by having a $20,000 prize for people who vote. So if it's legal, I think we should definitely consider that. And the other thing is, it would kind of be go, defeating, I think, can, the state wants low voter turnout. That, that's what that purpose of the new voter registration law is. And we, if we could do this, it'd get people motivated, I think, on their own to go register themselves. So, just something to think about. Thank you.
Mayor Finkel, aye, thank you for that public comment. We'll now move on to... Yes?
I, I just want to make sure, I think there might be one other...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, looks like, uh, yes, Bob Swan Jr.
Uh, Mr. Swan, for some reason, we can't hear you. Looks like you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Sorry, I don't know what's going wrong.
Can you unmute it?
Bob, unfortunately, we can't hear you. Um, we'll see if we can come back to you when we, see if we can get that working again. Raise your hand if you think you, you can get that working. Sorry, Bob, can't hear you.
Mr. Swan, I'll send you a phone, a phone number if you'd like to call in. Bear with me, though. Oh, I can't.
Well, let's go ahead and start this item. Porter, if you can work with him, we'll see if we can make that work. Uh, but we'll go ahead and start the regular agenda item, consider adopting the downtown Lawrence Plan. And Bob, if you're going to talk about what I think you're going to talk about, um, it probably relates to the, um, downtown master plan as well, so you could speak to it at that point as well. So, um, so let's go ahead and, um, start the presentation on the downtown Lawrence Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. I am excited to be here this evening. This has been a three-year process that got interrupted by the pandemic, and it's been a lot of hard work by a lot of stakeholders and a lot of community involvement. I want to first thank all of the community that stayed involved and stick, stuck with us, as well as the steering committee, um, who devoted a lot of time and attention to the matter. Um, and with that, the action tonight is pretty simple. It is adopt the plan, if appropriate. And our consultants, House Hill Levine and Associates is here this evening, and they have a presentation for you. They're gonna lead you through a little bit of the background on the plan, um, lead you through what happened in the last few months in particular, in detail, and talk about some highlights of those changes that were recommended by the steering committee that's in the draft before you this evening. Um, and with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Nick Davis with House Hill Levine.
Amy, hopefully everyone can see and hear me. And I'm gonna share my screen. So, yeah, as Amy had mentioned, and Amy, thanks for kind of setting this up. We're gonna go through a couple of different things as it relates to the downtown Lawrence Plan. I want to give an update of kind of what we've been doing over the last few months, where we're at in the process. Um, and then, you know, go over the, the final draft or the final plan that we have, um, prepared that you've seen over the last few weeks, uh, kind of how that got developed, that type of thing. So, the presentation agenda is, uh, just about the planning process, what it took to get to, kind of where we're at today. Um, themes from the draft downtown plan, public comments, uh, an overview of the final downtown plan itself, just high level. And then any questions or comments you may have, we can go through those. So, about the planning process, um, and for those of you who've been a part of this process all, all throughout this, who probably recognize some of this, but it is a seven-step process for this project. Um, task one was project initiation, task two is community outreach, task three, we prepared a market and demographic analysis, task four was existing conditions analysis, task five, we prepared the vision statement and guiding principles. And then task six was the draft downtown master plan, and task seven, where we're at now, is the final downtown plan and implementation. So just sort of a high level, you know, why do we do this? Why do we do these types of plans? What's the purpose of the downtown plan? Um, it's to engage the community, to identify its desires, its needs, and its aspirations. We wanted to assess the existing issues and opportunities, um, recognize the existing successful nature of downtown, and incorporate some of the innovative and creative initiatives that were already in place and were being developed even during this planning process. We wanted to create a guide for future capital projects to support grant applications, to direct development activity, really to serve as this, this guide for what, um, should happen in the future, and then ensure the realization of the plan's vision, the goals and the policies through an implementation plan, which is one of the last components that's been prepared towards the back of this document. Just as an overview, we had conducted quite a bit of outreach for this project. It was a very thorough approach in terms of trying to gather as much input as we possibly could from the public, as we went through, you know, both that project initiation and then even some of the existing conditions, and as we started getting into some of the vision and guiding principles approach. Uh, one of our first events was a community-wide workshop, then we had held a business workshop, um, an additional downtown and adjacent neighborhoods workshop. So that was all sort of at the beginning to get people's thoughts about what the issues and what the concerns were. Um, you know, we, we produced some DIY kits, some do-it-yourself workshops, so people were able to take these materials home and, and prepare, uh, their own, um, feedback for us to consolidate or combine into our overall outreach summaries. Uh, we held a visioning workshop where, you know, we, we got around tables, and the maps that you see kind of at the top right of this page, um, are the maps that were prepared by these different groups, just giving us some ideas about where they'd like to see, you know, future redevelopment, or where they'd like to see a potential park or a cut through or something like that. Um, during COVID, and, and certainly had some impacts on, on some of the, the process of the project, um, several listening lessons or sessions were held, um, you know, by city staff, just giving people an opportunity to provide some input. Uh, and then even through the draft plan development, we conducted an open house. Uh, you know, everybody was able to give us an opportunity, or given an opportunity to provide some of their feedback. We went through, uh, the overall plan, uh, what the, what the goals were, and then, um, just took down feedback and compiled all of those into, uh, discussion points with both the, uh, city staff, but also the downtown steering committees. We had an online portal where people were able to see, um, you know, through the project website, different questionnaires that were available for them to fill out, get an online mapping tool, uh, which is on the right here, where people are able to provide some of their thoughts, you know, what their, again, what their issues were, all in kind of a digital space. Uh, we also held, um, a visioning preference survey was posted to the project website. So on that visual preference survey, people were given, again, to just tell us what kinds of development would they, or what kind of improvement would they like to see, you know, what kind of buildings would they like to see, how should parking, um, you know, be either screened or landscaped, or how would you move through it? You know, what kind of streetscape improvements would you like to see? What kind of public improvements would you like to see? And then those ratings were, uh, used to help kind of just guide some of the recommendations inside of the plans, create a better understanding of what the desires, what the, um, ultimately, the, the look and the feel people were looking for in downtown Lawrence. So then that comes to the, the final downtown plan for Lawrence. So to get to that final downtown plan, we went through a, a pretty lengthy draft plan review process. So, starting back in April, we delivered the draft plan to city staff. Um, once some refinements were made there, we published that draft plan along with the survey. So as people were reviewing the draft plan, they could fill out a survey to give us some feedback on, you know, where, where maybe we were missing something, or where they would like us to discuss with the steering committee what kinds of changes might be needed. On May 20th, we held the community open house. It was virtual. Um, same thing, went through the entire draft plane. Uh, people were giving us feedback, residents, business owners, you know, anybody who, who sort of, uh, had a stake in the downtown was providing us feedback on what they'd like to see changed, or, you know, where they thought the downtown plan was right on the mark. on what they'd like to see changed or, you know, where they thought the downtown plan was right on the mark. All of those comments, along with what was provided on the project website, were consolidated. And we talked about those with the steering committee briefly in that first steering committee meeting. We came back to the city commission. There was a brief presentation about the status of the draft plan. Based on feedback from the steering committee and the city commission's presentation on the first, we extended the public process, the public comment process through June 24. We, as a team, compiled all of the comments that were received, either from email, you know, on the project website, through the survey, you know, during the open house from the steering committee. All of that was compiled and published. And we had one additional steering committee meeting to go through all of the comments that needed to be either addressed or resolved, you know, based on our discussions with the steering committee in that first meeting in May. And then from there, we made our refinements, made edits to the overall plan and posted the final downtown plan on July 20. This is just showing a portal of, you know, where these materials have been provided throughout the process, how people have been able to see, you know, what's out there and what can be reviewed on the website. Through that draft plan, open house process, and even through what, you know, we were receiving online, these were just some of the topic areas that came out of that. So, you know, there might have been one or two people who felt like the the public art needed either a little bit more or they just had questions about it or didn't think it was in the plans. There's just a lot of things that were highlighted throughout that comment period. So what we did is created these overall topic areas. And just as an example, some of the key topic themes, we started to provide a breakdown of what we were receiving. So this is what we walked through with both city staff, but also with the steering committee. You know, this isn't the main ones. These are just some examples of the key topic themes that we were seeing. But when we had broken it down, we walked through a matrix similar to this that just shows, you know, where the comment came from, what the comment specifically was, what response we had for it as it relates to the draft plan, what the key topic area was. And we moved through these. I think we went over 150 key topic area discussion points with the steering committee when we met with them that fourth time. But ultimately, that led to, you know, kind of using this matrix led to a discussion that got us to the final downtown Lawrence plan. So just a high, a higher level, just kind of walk through. And then if there's any specific questions from the city commission, we can come back to this. The downtown plan includes a vision statement. That vision statement is a 20-year kind of looking out ahead. Once this plan's been adopted, you know, we're hoping that these are the types of things that downtown Lawrence will be known for, that downtown Lawrence will be able to kind of point back to because of recommendations inside this plan. We also produce guiding principles. Those guiding principles were meant to sort of serve as like a lens when you're making recommendations in the future or when you're discussing, you know, a potential change or a new concept. You know, is it strengthening that downtown as a destination? Is it reinforcing downtown as an economically thriving district? Have you ensured that there's an equitable participation and involvement process along the way? So again, just using these as sort of lenses when you make future decisions as it relates to the downtown. The downtown plan includes a lane use matrix. That lane use matrix includes things like presidential office, entertainment and culture, institutional and civic. But it doesn't identify in any one place where a specific you should be. That's what we use the functional subareas for. So inside of these functional subareas, we identify a series of uses that would be appropriate. So for example, along Mass Street, you know, we recommend several different types of uses that would be appropriate, could be mixed use, could be office-based, could be, you know, residential pub, that type of thing. So we don't want to be so limiting to say only one use is appropriate. Those functional subareas came from, you know, looking at current zoning, looking at the existing lane use, the traffic patterns in this area. And those functional subareas are broken, broken out in more detail in the plan. As part of the lane use section, lane use and development section, we identified opportunity sites. This was something that came up during the public process and something that we had heard from the steering committee, a couple of sites were identified that people just didn't feel were appropriate redevelopment sites. The replay was one of them that came up in multiple different, in multiple different feedback points. So one of the things that we wanted to do, we went back and made that refinement, double-checked some of the other redevelopment sites that we identified, just made sure that those were appropriate, but also identified the types of opportunity sites that are appropriate. So there's redevelopment sites which show up as red on the map. There's parking lot redevelopment, which shows up in sort of a hatch on the map on the left. There are catalyst sites, and those are identified as catalyst sites mainly because of the size, you know, where they're located in the downtown. You know, some of the significance it would have as you enter into the downtown or you're leaving the downtown and then what it would do to some of the parcels or some of the development around that. So just keeping in mind that those catalyst sites are selected not just because of, you know, their location, but also some of the significance they would have as it relates to some of the uses around them. And then we also talk about strategic investment. Any one of these sites and any parcel in the downtown could redevelop at any time. This this plan is not saying that other areas shouldn't redevelop. Something that's not on this map could come up for redevelopment or a use could change tomorrow. And I know you're all aware of that, but I just want to make sure that this isn't us prioritizing or saying, you know, you have to do this one first. It's really just showing you that if an area is to redevelop, you know, does it fit into one of these four categories, redevelop or to improve? You know, does it fit into these four categories? Is it appropriate? Does it kind of match our overall vision or overall goal for the downtown? Some of the sites, those catalyst sites that I talked about, two that we had identified of the four, where the post office and six in Mass, definitely received some comments about the post office. Even in the text, we identify, you know, these are, these are site plans for site planning purposes. Their 3D models are illustrative. It's just to show again, if the post office was to ever relocate out of the downtown, you know, redevelopment opportunities could look like this. If at six in Mass, this site was to redevelop in the future, it would be more appropriate if it redeveloped in this nature, in this form. It's not saying that actively the city should be pursuing these. It's just that if it does come up, these are the types of things that would be more consistent with what we've talked about in the plan. We talked about activating beacon storefronts and even starting to pull out as you go through some of this, you know, what's appropriate for beacon storefronts? How do we address some of these challenges? Something that we talked about quite a bit with the steering committee and with the public. Beside enhancements, there's several instances in the downtown where there's opportunities for enhancements to occur. We even started, you can kind of see in the blue text, just pulling out some of the language that's in here about, you know, what would be more inclusive? What would be an opportunity for other people to participate in the downtown or have a role in the downtown that traditionally have not? So that those are kind of throughout the document, just pulling out areas where we've talked about this in detail. Historic resources and historic preservation ordinance. I think working with people in the steering committee, working with those in the public, the historic preservation ordinance was a topic point that came up a couple of times. So just making sure that this got cleaned up or addressed in a way that everybody felt was was more comfortable about what we're trying to address, what the intent of the historic preservation ordinance is. If there's questions, we can come back to this about, you know, what this would be as it relates to as you move forward. How should the historic preservation be addressed? Public spaces and homelessness. You know, I know these are issues that we've talked about throughout this planning process, making sure that there are public spaces throughout the downtown of different scales. You know, some are of a larger scale, some of them are more pocket parks or, you know, just small places for people to gather or, you know, to meet people, to just, you know, exchange ideas. Those types of, those types of spaces are really important in downtown, I think, more so than ever. And then just homelessness, building off of some of the the current initiatives, the current agencies that are working in the downtown and just making sure that they're consistent with or that the downtown plan is consistent with what's being done already and what's been successful and maybe where there needs to be additional work done in the future. So we provide a couple of recommendations about things that we've seen work in other communities or other, other regions. Building height, always, always a topic when you're preparing a downtown plan, can be a challenging topic to discuss. I feel like, you know, based on the previous plan, the previous downtown plan, how this area has developed over time and sort of where we're going moving forward or where we think we should go moving forward. We've identified what we believe to be the appropriate building heights for each area. You know, there's this, there's kind of like two step-ups. There's Mass Street, which is two to four stories. It steps up just directly behind Mass Street. So on the west side of Vermont or the east side of New Hampshire, there's a slight step-up. And then you start to step back down as you cross New Hampshire to the east or Vermont to the west as you start getting into the residential neighborhood. So keeping Mass Street more of the two to four stories stepping up as you cross that alley, but then stepping back down, just providing a visualization of what that looks like. And then the functional subareas in the plan, a couple of sections above this, talks about that in a little bit more detail. We talk about gathering spaces, so things like outdoor dining, public spaces, pocket parks and plazas. And as I'd mentioned, this is something that, you know, we were hearing about two years ago when we had started this plan, certainly through COVID. This was something that came out and was even more important. So just making sure that there's opportunities for outdoor dining and that there's opportunities for these public spaces is really important. And the plan provides specific guidance about what that should look like, you know, what the city's role is and who they're going to need to partner with to make sure that those spaces are provided and they're consistent across the entire downtown. Similar to that issue, the parklets and the cut-throughs, these are two, well, the parklets are something that can be very unique to any community and how you handle them is something that, you know, the city continues to work with, working with downtown business owners, you know, whether to formalize a permanent parklet standard, you know, working with those business owners that are directly impacted by it and have their own ideas of what they'd like to see. And then same thing with the cut-throughs, you know, where cut-throughs are available in the downtown. It's a very unique situation. So just providing guidance about how those cut-throughs should be programmed, what it should look like, make sure that they're safe, well-lit, well-landscaped, those types of things. And then the last section of the downtown plan just talks about, you know, what, what the, what the use of this document looks like. So how do you continue to, you know, either update the downtown plan or regularly review and update that document? How are you using it on a daily or at least weekly basis to make decisions? You know, what that process looks like for staff, what it looks like for the city commission, what it looks like for any of the other groups that are invested in the downtown success and want to see that realized over time. So what is their role? Continuing that public communication is important. I think that's something Lawrence has always put a high level of importance on. But just knowing that anything as it relates to the downtown, it's a very sacred and important area to the community. So maintaining that public communication and using this plan to guide us, decisions are important. We also provided, provided an action matrix. It's broken up into three categories. There's a key action, so it's a poll from the recommendations in the plan, something that's a specific action to be achieved. We give a time estimate, if it's short, midterm, long term. And then partners, who you're going to be working with to realize this key action or this key recommendation looks very similar to this. This is just an example of what's in the plan, you know, establishing a very clear key action, a goal, something that you need to achieve, something you can check off as a group, what that time estimate is and who those partners are. But with that, if there's any questions, I'll stop sharing. Any questions that you have for our team as we prepare this report? So we could go through the final downtown plan itself or, you know, if it's about the process. You know, myself and Jackie Wels is on the line as well. I should have said it first.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that presentation. Thanks for your work on this plan. Do any commissioners have questions at this time? I think we'll go ahead and open it to a public comment, and I'm sure there'll be some questions that arise and some comments at the end. So we'll go ahead and open this to public comment. If you're in person, you can let Sherry know and she will call upon you. And if you're online, you can raise your hand, use the raise your hand feature, and Sherry will call upon you.
You can go ahead, sir. Please restate your name.
Matthews, how much time will I be allowed?
The same, you'll have three minutes, sir.
I am curious where the post office would be relocated and how that would affect the people who have homes downtown, what their commute might be to their post office. As far as homelessness, the free meals in this town, to my knowledge, range, the buildings where they're served range from Tenth to where the Salvation Army is, and I believe that is Ninth Street for the most part. If people were to be relocated even to something as simple as a field that we could bail and cut short and put a Johnny on the spot, as simple as putting it an extension on the number one bus past where the current homeless shelter, Lawrence Homeless Shelter is, to a field out there and make it accessible to downtown, we could put people in tents very quickly. They would have tents, they would have toilets. We could provide water to the best of our ability. They could have a ride downtown on the number one if we extended that bus just as far as the first empty field we find. And currently, the the situation is the tents that are allowed for the homeless are only allowed north of Sandra J Shaw Park. That is not a safe place. I myself pitched a tent there one afternoon, and when I picked my tent up, there was a hypodermic needle in the grass below where I had been. There is also an Amtrak train that goes through there frequently, and it is hard to sleep with an Amtrak train 30 feet from your tent, let me tell you. So if we were to find a field where we could extend the number one bus, we could get people out of downtown, give them a free ride downtown on the number one bus. You would not have to create a new bus, and they would have access to food when they get downtown. If we create that field anywhere that doesn't have a bus, then you have people who can't reach free food. Thank you for your time.
Bob Swan Jr.
Bob, now it's showing you still muted.
Bob, if you're on your phone, you can hit star six and use your phone to speak into the meeting.
It's right now again. Okay.
We got it.
All right, good. Sorry for all the problems. I've got a brand new computer, but I'm not new. So I'm the founder of the International Peace Center, and I'm here to really enthusiastically support and praise the downtown Lawrence plan and its vision and recommendations for the future of our very special city. I appreciate the sensitivity of the plan to historical, cultural diversity and other concerns and emphases that help make our community so special. In this spirit, I would like to share a vision for the International Peace Center that I've already shared with some of the commissioners and a few of the steps we are taking to make certain that this big idea of the center, like those set forth in the downtown Lawrence plan, is carried out involving all of our citizens of every age and background. For example, we are inviting our brothers and sisters of Haskell Indian Nations University to become involved in the envisioning and planning process, particularly for the Lawrence Peace Museum. Our objective is to create a world-class international peace center with its Lawrence Peace Museum on historic Massachusetts Street where Quantrill's horrific raid unfolded. Where unforgettable scenes were filmed for the day after and seen by one billion people worldwide, where more tangents visit than any other destination in the state. Massachusetts Street, the International Peace Center there will become a source of important initiatives as Lawrence citizens were in the 1980s to change negative perceptions and build common bonds between Americans and Russians again, and also between our citizens and those of China, of Iran, of North Korea, and the nations where frankly, our current relations, led by our governments, are leading us closer to war, made even more likely with the increasing instability of nuclear weapons. The Peace Museum will portray our community's heroic struggle through the atrocity of war to become a beacon of peace. Stan Heard and our most imaginative minds and artistic hands will create an experience that brings thousands of visitors monthly to our downtown for decades to come, ideally located in the catalyst site redevelopment at 11th and Mass. As with the United States Holocaust Museum in DC and other great museums, we want those who've experienced the Lawrence Peace Museum to leave changed with a greater personal commitment to peace. I want to thank several city commissioners who've really been supportive up to this stage and other individuals and organizations in Lawrence and around the state for their enthusiasm and invaluable input to date as we move ahead making this noble vision. and invaluable input to date as we move ahead, making this noble vision what we hope will become a crown jewel within the more beautiful and livable, exciting and engaging Lawrence of our future as envisioned in the downtown Lawrence Plan. Please send any comments and support to Lawrence International Peace Center, the International Peace Center, P O Box 1776, Lawrence, at the 66044. Thank you very much.
Ron Gacius.
Thank you. My name is Ron Gacius. Uh, thank you, Mayor Finkel, and members of the commission. I saw with interest that the revised draft of the downtown strategic plan was coming for the commission tonight for, um, consideration. So I wanted to spend some time this weekend reviewing it because I was confident that a downtown strategic plan that called for ensuring the civic and culture, that downtown remained the civic and cultural heart of the city and, and that called for strengthening downtown attractions would have some great strategic ideas for the arts and cultural community. And, and what I found is that while the downtown strategic plan calls for doing those things, ensuring that downtown remains the civic and cultural heart of the city and strengthening downtown attractions, the strategic plan is actually incredibly light in any kinds of specifics which would actually lead to that happening, at least in my opinion. Uh, two specific recommendations that I could find were one, that we should have more public art, possibly murals on some of the large buildings downtown, enhance our public sculpture, uh, perhaps to a sculpture garden. There was some mention of even positioning that by the river perhaps. And also the second recommendation, which turned out to be one of the specific action steps mentioned at the end of the report, was to use cultural events and celebrations to achieve more welcoming goals. Well, I think those two things that have been recommended, the arts and cultural organizations in this community already do. And what I would encourage that you add to this recommendation, I would encourage that you add using the Lawrence Cultural Plan to enhance and broaden the downtown cultural and arts offerings to meet the downtown strategic goals. Uh, the cultural plan is well-established. The city has some experience working with it. Um, it's not particularly expensive, as we've seen over time, apart from the acquisition of public art. And I think adding this kind of reference to the cultural plan would satisfy the interest of a lot of folks as well as the interest of this strategic plan, at least as it's currently drafted. Thank you very much.
Ron, could you say that language again for me?
Um, yes, yes, I'm suggesting that we, the, the strategic plan actually made suggestions to use several things. Use the facade enhancement program, use the bike plan for the, this, use the sidewalk prioritization program. I would suggest language that would say, use the Lawrence Cultural Plan to enhance and broaden the downtown cultural and arts offerings in order to meet downtown strategic goals. That's not creating any, any new goals. It's referencing the goals included in the strategic plan. And, and just elevates, I think, the role of the cultural plan in doing these things for you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is, I'm Chris Flowers. Um, I sent in my thoughts earlier, but I was just wondering, um, um, when it comes to minority-owned businesses, are LGBTQ considered a minority-owned business? Um, just in some, some cities, it's not. Um, I'm guessing it's not because I think it's, my impression is it's just for like racial minorities and women. And also when it comes to like incentives for women, um, what does someone who's non-binary count as? Like if someone has a vagina and considers themselves not like they or uses pronouns they or them, are they allowed to get any kind of incentives for like a woman? Since technically they identify as they, but what if it's a someone with a penis who identifies as they? Like, does the, the vagina get it or do they both, neither one get it? Like, I just asked this because I think we need to be like asking ourselves, what is a woman? When we add language about like, like given, like what women get, you know? Um, let's see, also I was wondering, what are the stats for like the number of LGBTQ-owned businesses? And I bring this up because just statistically, it looked like, um, that LGBT-owned businesses are less than what they make up for the general population, similar to how the other minorities are. So if, if LGBTQ is not included as a minority, I was wondering, what is the reasoning for us excluding them? Because that's basically what it is. We're, we're including some minorities and excluding others. So I think the minorities that we're exclude, that we're excluding deserve an explanation why they're being excluded. Also, I think the, the handicapped slash disabled, um, I think they should be included also. Um, and also are these, these incentives for minority-owned businesses, is it just tied to downtown? Cause I, I don't kind of, I don't like that. It seems like we're saying, hey, we need investment in downtown. So we'll, we'll, we'll give you, um, incentives if you help us. But I think trying to shoot for minority-owned businesses, like for diversity in our, our, our business ownership, I shouldn't think it's, I don't think it should be limited to downtown. I think it should count for all of Lawrence. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But yeah, why, if we are excluding minorities, though, I would just like to know how, like, what, what determines who gets chosen and who gets excluded? Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the public comment on this item.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you, Sherry. Um, I'd bring it back to the commission for comments, questions.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I, I guess there's a couple of things I'm curious about. Were there any, um, considerations of the smart code that were included in this plan? And if so, are there any changes to the smart code that would be helpful or, or useful for using it in the downtown?
Um, maybe, I'm sorry, can you maybe provide a little more feedback for what you're asking? Um, like we just, well, we didn't provide code amendment, if that's what you're asking.
So I mean, how, how does the smart code fit with this plan?
So this is a, a policy document. So there are recommendations inside of this plan that talks about looking into the city's current zoning code for potential amendments that could, you know, be applicable if you want to align policies in this document with your current code. Uh, but we don't provide specific language for what that could be.
Okay.
Just to the, like that division of planning and zoning, two very different.
And, you know, Plan 2040 has, you know, great emphasis on increasing residential density. Frankly, I don't see that emphasis in this plan. Um, can you tell me how this meets the 2040 goals?
So we do identify, I would say several locations within those functional sub areas, where residential uses would be appropriate, uh, could be standalone multifamily structures, but mostly we're talking about misuse development. So something on the ground floor could be retail service, office, but residential above. Uh, I, I would say in, at least half of the functional suburbs we've identified where residential, um, density could be, could be explored.
I, I guess I see a great difference between exploration and emphasis, but.
Okay.
This is Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. Um, in addition to what Nick was also mentioning, I would also refer you to page 21. There's an entire section on housing and it actually details the emphasis that the plan places on the housing needs. It was also included in the guiding principles as one of the principles included with one of the principles that guides the entire document.
This is Commissioner Nanda. I guess I will go next. Um, I am really glad to see this document. It is something that has been in the works for a long time and was in conversation far longer than that. Um, and it's really hard right now, I think, to look 20 or 40 years in the future, especially given the last year and the wild change that we've experienced in the way that we do literally everything. Um, and so I, I think that this plan, having, having done it during the pandemic almost, um, gives it a little bit more resiliency in some ways. Um, and that's really hard, I think, when you're developing a plan to say, also, anything can change at literally any moment completely, but here's the best information we have right now and a direction you could probably steer your ship in, um, generally. So thank you for your work on that and for engaging our community on that. Um, that is never an easy task and you have delivered a lot of information for us to digest. Um, and a lot to consider. I, um, I know that there were a lot of comments regarding, um, looking at existing policies and one that I appreciate certainly is how do we, um, reassess and reevaluate and, um, ensure, but also consider moving forward our historic PRS, um, policies and ordinances, um, and how do we, how do we incorporate that more fully? I think that's a very important conversation. Another piece that I think, um, was kind of touched on, but maybe didn't offer a specific, um, information around is safety downtown. Um, you know, my field is around sexual assault and sexual misconduct. When we look at, um, programs like SEPTED, um, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, you know, how are we creating our spaces to flow and provide safety for our residents who are accessing them, particularly the residents that we know are accessing them perhaps during, um, less safe times of the day? Um, and I'm hopeful that we can incorporate that into implementation um, because safety is something that's addressed and, um, particularly you mentioned it in the parks and parklets. Um, but I think even just walking downtown, um, at night can feel very unsafe, depending on who you are and the context you're in. Um, and I'm hopeful that we can really look at that as a unified design for the entirety of downtown as we look at those facade upgrades or adding residential or, um, those parklets. So, uh, thanks for your work and hopefully those are some things that we can think about as we continue moving forward on this project.
I also certainly appreciate the, the work has been done. And if you have told me when we started this process, we would have a public hearing that three people would show up and talk about, um, it in front of the city commission, I would have, you know, fallen over. And I, but I think that, that, um, highlights the strength of, of the public outreach we did and the steering committee in particular, and the work that the steering committee did. And so I, I want to thank, um, Nick and Jackie, as well as Amy and our entire steering committee for the work they did to get us to this point of, um, a really good plan, um, that really moves us forward. I, I, I am interested, um, a little bit, both in what Ron said about cultural emphasis and what Commissioner Bulley said, um, about housing. And, you know, not, I mean, I guess sometimes you can, you know, play with the plan. Sometimes you can create legislative intent by speaking about the bill before you pass it, as it were. But, you know, I do wonder on page, um, 20 of the plan, we talk about residential land use and we say downtown Lawrence could support a greater level of residential density in a wider range of housing types. I mean, just a change from could to should, I think, would, would start to show that emphasis that if we changed the, the word could to downtown, Lawrence should support a greater level of residential density in a wider range of housing types. I think, um, that, that change would, would start to get at the point, um, Commissioner Bulley was making, which I think is a strong point of, of, um, emphasis that we should have. And, and certainly there are all points where we talk about residential development that we should do so. You know, I'm also interested in Ron's idea of including, um, you know, referencing the cultural plan to enhance and broaden downtown Lawrence, Lawrence's cultural offerings. You know, certainly we put that as one of our guiding principles is the idea we wanted to do that. Um, want to accomplish that, but I think maybe adding that one, um, goal in there would be, well, that one statement of using the culture plan would be a nice improvement that someone could cross-reference, you know, when they're looking at the plan. My last kind of question, and maybe this is for Amy. Do you see the, you know, this implementation plan, do you see this being housed in planning development? I mean, most of these, many of these are planning, but some of them are planning related. Or do you see kind of like a strategic plan that different people will be in charge of implementing different parts of, of this action plan?
Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director, this is definitely a unique plan for us. Um, you definitely touched on one of those, those issues. Um, I do think that there will be assignments, quote unquote, um, to other community partners, other city staff. But I do think that Planning and Development Services can sort of house the plan, so to speak. Um, it is incorporated, it will be incorporated upon adoption, it'll be incorporated by reference into the comprehensive plan. So it's a good place for it to be, but we can sort of be the ones to shepherd it through and work with our community partners, stakeholders and, um, other city staff on those action items.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that. And maybe I shouldn't put you on the spot, maybe it's for someone else. But, you know, I do remember when we did the economic development plan, when we got to that action plan, we had a list that, you know, that as a column, not only with partners, but had a column of, if who would be responsible for that. And I guess I'd be interested in, you know, maybe seeing a column added to this that identifies kind of who will be responsible for, for that plan, kind of like we do with the economic development plan. Obviously it'll change over time, but, but just having someone take ownership of some of these implementation items, I think would help not lose focus on them like we did with the ED plan. So, um, again, nothing we have to do with approving the plan, but as, as we move to implement that, I'd be interested in that.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I appreciate your, um, you know, consideration of my concerns, mayor. And I, I wanted to say that, you know, the requirements of environmental sustainability, just, you know, cry out for greater residential density in this area. And, you know, the impact on, you know, greater utilization of public transit. I mean, there's all kinds of aspects that I, I think this plan simply doesn't emphasize greatly.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Shipley, um, uh, I appreciate your comments about, um, how these action items, uh, come into departments. I can imagine Parks and Rec having a great deal to do with, some of the breezeways and things like that. So, um, I'll be interested to see how there's interdepartmental cooperation in addition to all the partners in the community, um, interested in changing how those operate. Um, I, with respect to the, um, residential aspect of downtown, it's, uh, been discussed widely and I thought fairly established that there was a desire for people to be living down there. And in fact, it is a neighborhood. It is not often thought of as a neighborhood, but to me it is, um, often. Often, a delegate is sent to the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods to speak on, have people that live there, which I appreciate. But I would also say that whatever we write, that we be clear about equity and affordable housing. It is a notoriously expensive place to live. And I'm happy to join Commissioner Bowley and hoping that density is particularly a part of downtown or mixed use, but that it not be so exclusive as to make it impossible to live.
Mayor Finkley, I agree with that. And I do think we have some good language about that on page 21 of the plan about focusing on affordable housing and ensuring that all residents can afford to live in the city. So I do think that's an important part of the plan. Yeah, I guess the other thing we have to remind ourselves and is that just kind of like our last item, a lot of this will be implemented when we fund these, some of these improvements. And so when we look at the CIP, you know, in coming years and look at, you know, things in our budget, we too will be part of that in making sure that the funding is there and prioritized appropriately to get some of these things done. And so that definitely would be part of that. And I guess, you know, I am very excited about the plan. You know, I think it's been a long time coming. And as you look at, you know, some of the the purposes of the plan, as we went through that, one of them was to engage the community. I think we did a great job on that. And as I mentioned earlier, I think the participation we had and even the lack of comments tonight really showed that we've had the engagement of the community. So I appreciate that. And really, besides the implementation plan of some of these items, the other part of this is this is a guide for future capital projects was mentioned. And I guess I hope the next step on this is not only the action plan that includes us and staff and Downtown Lawrence, Inc., but we have opportunity sites. We have a desire to have increased residential development. I hope we see some projects come along that are consistent with this plan, but also move us forward to taking advantage of that and accomplishing these goals. You know, the plan is only as good if it gets used. And so hopefully, there'll be some folks out there who are willing to partner with us and help us fulfill this plan. And so appreciate that. I would note to one of the questions from the public, as far as I know, that the post office isn't going to be one of those people that partnered with us. I don't think they're going anywhere. I've heard nothing about that. It's a good thing to have in the plan in case it happens, but I don't predict that anytime soon. So and if that did happen, then I'm sure there'd be lots of discussion. But anyway, I'm excited about this plan. I think it's a good step forward. You know, I am, so maybe move towards a motion. I'd be interested in hearing what folks think about those two changes. One, changing could, you should on page 20. And second, adding this language on the use of the cultural plan.
This is Commissioner Nanda. I think if it is consistent with other language within the plan, if the language throughout the plan is should, even on items that we know have been prioritized, so long as there is that consistency, I think that would be sufficient. And then that goes for incorporating other plans as well. You know, are there other plans that we need to include in that language? Would it be the, I would just want to not be inconsistent on one specific issue and maybe be more consistent.
Mayor Finkley, I certainly disagree with that. Nick or Amy, do you have a thought on those two changes? And if they're holistically consistent with what we were doing?
Yeah, I would say both of those ads are consistent with language of the plan. Even in the housing section on page 21, we're saying should. We can be more deliberate with should on page 20 in the residential section. And then the reference to the Lawrence Cultural Plan, I think that's appropriate. That's something we've done with other plans that we've referenced. I think that's a really good point. Just continuing to build off of other successful strategic plans that are out there.
Mayor Finkley, thank you for that. Other comments or ready for motion? Since I've been talking about that, I guess I would move for adoption of the Downtown Lawrence Plan with a change of changing could, you should on page 20, written in reference to density of housing and including a reference to the cultural cultural plan to enhance and broaden Downtown Lawrence's cultural offerings.
Commissioner Nanda, second.
So motion by myself, second by Commissioner Nanda. I vote aye. Commissioner Nanda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Passes three to one. Thank you very much. Thanks for your work. Obviously, as with many plans, there's a lot of additional work to be done. But we think this is a great step forward and appreciate all your hard work on this.
Well, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. We appreciate it. We appreciate working with the city of Lawrence.
Thank you, Nick. And Jackie, thank you. Okay, that takes us, those are only regular gen items. That takes us to commission items. Do any commissioners have any commission items?
This is Commissioner Nanda. I brought up last week, when you were gone, whether or not we were going to move to virtual. Obviously, we're virtual this evening. Presumably, this will continue until further notice. But I just, I kind of wanted to say that out loud because we didn't we didn't conclude that conversation last week because we were waiting for everyone to be back here. And then things kind of changed swiftly. So Mayor, I just wanted to confirm that most likely we will be meeting virtually until further notice once again.
Mayor Finkley, of course, I'm interested in other's thoughts as well. But my thought would be as long as the city has, you know, made the decision, and that's, you know, Craig's decision to make the city buildings mask, you know, with mask requirement, that it's better to be in this virtual format than us being there present and wearing masks. And assuming everyone agrees with that, I think we'll remain in this format until, you know, we're able, hopefully someday, to lift that requirement. Appreciate that. Any other commission items? Okay, that brings us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The, there are four items there before you in the city manager's report. The one I'll make mention of is we got some attention by the U.S. EPA report to Congress on our integrated plan. And we were only one of 13 cities to be highlighted by that on a national basis. So it's a pretty proud recognition of the hard work and good planning that the community's done and MSOs has done. So I wanted to shine a light on that and give them some attention. The article is attached to the item as well. Other than that, we did include the transfer memo. That's a part of our budget preparations. It just talks about the ways that we're doing cost allocation in there. So happy to answer any questions on those two items or any of the other two.
Mayor Finkley, I would note that, you know, we saw that the Senate passed the infrastructure plan today. And included in that is, I believe, $25 billion for environmental cleanup, environmental agency actions. And so one, that item one falls in line with that, and hopefully we can tap into that. But also, obviously, the farmland remediation would be a great place, and hopefully this infrastructure bill will help us capture some dollars for that. But at least we're on the EPA's being noticed by them, you know, with this integrated plan. So hopefully that gives us a leg up when we go to request some of this infrastructure money when it gets finalized. But this, this is a public hearing item. If any member of the public would like to speak on one of these four items, please raise your hand. Use the raise your hand feature. Or if you're present, let Sheri know and she will call upon you.
Okay, Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. And I was just wondering about the August 17th meeting about ordinances. I just hoping that public urination is on there because I brought that up about a year ago to the HRC. And it basically got put on hold till the outside police review was done, but they didn't cover it at all. So I was just wondering if that's going to be on there because I think it should be. So thank you.
That's all the public comment, Mayor.
Mayor Finkley, I thank you. Any commissioners have any questions or comments on the city manager's report? Seeing none, that brings us to the calendar. Any questions or comments on the calendar? Mayor Finkley, seeing none, I think that brings us to adjournment. Pretty early night, but looking ahead at our next week's meeting, I would not expect it to be an early night next week. But we'll take it when we can get it. So is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Commissioner Nanda. I'd move to adjourn.
Vice Mayor Shipley, second.
Mayor Finkley, this is a motion by Commissioner Nanda, is second by Vice Mayor Shipley. Commissioner Nanda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkley, aye, passes four to zero. We'll see you next week. Thank you.
Thanks.